We do.
We have a quorum?
We do.
All right, so let's.
Believe we're short only Commissioner Lewis.
All right. I'm sure he'll be joining us shortly. Okay, so let's stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We could have the roll call, please, Director.
AM Pistado.
Here.
Jay Louis. Dee Mello.
Present.
The rest.
Here.
And Russo.
Here.
Jay Sanford.
Here.
You sitesman.
Here.
All right. All right, Open Public Meetings Act announcement regarding notice. I would like to advise those present that notice of this regular meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken has been provided to the public in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this regular monthly July's board meeting has been scheduled for Thursday, July eighth, twenty twenty-one, was sent to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on Tuesday, June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, as notification to the general public of said meeting, and sent to the City Clerk of Hoboken on Tuesday, June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, for a copy of the agenda to be posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, the Hoboken Public Library, and the Hoboken Police Department Headquarters. I direct the minutes of this meeting to state that I have announced that adequate notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. In addition, I direct at the minutes of this meeting to state the following. As a result of the restrictions established by Executive Order one hundred and seven issued by the Governor of New Jersey with respect to the need to limit public gatherings to mitigate the spread of COVID nineteen, the meeting will be conducted exclusively through the use of communications equipment. This procedure is in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash nine point three, which states that a public body shall not be deemed to have violated any provision of the Open Public Meetings Act in conducting the meeting by means of communication or other electronic equipment. In addition, this procedure complies with Article three, Section seven of the authority bylaws, which allows participation in authority meetings by members of the Board of Commissioners by means of telephone, conference, or similar communication equipment. All right, and Mr. Fitzpatrick, I believe you have your traditional addendum.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In keeping with the housing authority's normal practice of affording members of the public the opportunity to comment at monthly board meetings, the authority will be accepting comment during this meeting in one of three ways. First, comments can be sent by email to hha@myhhanj.com now until seven thirty PM. All timely and legally appropriate comments received by email will be read aloud by an authority representative for all attendees of the meeting to hear. Second, beginning at approximately seven thirty PM, the authority will allow access to participants one at a time to comment using their telephone or through Zoom's audio function. Third, if you are participating in the meeting using Zoom from a web browser or smart device, you can submit comment using the Zoom Q and A function, which can be accessed by clicking the Q and A icon at the bottom of your screen. We require that any member of the public who wishes to submit comment using the Q and A function, please limit themselves to a single submission rather than submitting multiple brief comments. In the event that a member of the public submits more than one comment, only the first legally appropriate comment will be read aloud at the meeting. Any comments submitted after seven thirty PM will be rejected and will not be read aloud at the meeting. In addition, please note that while the Zoom video of this meeting is being is being streamed through Facebook Live, excuse me, public comment will not be accepted through Facebook or Facebook Live. Any member of the public watching through Facebook Live who wishes to comment may do so by email, by telephone, or by using the Zoom Q and A function. The email address again is hha@myhhanj.com, and the telephone number is six four six five eight eight six five six webinar ID four eight five eight eight one eight four nine. Finally, please be advised that the standard practice of the Executive Director and members of the board is to refrain from engaging in a back and forth discussion during the public comment portion of authority meetings. However, in light of the ongoing crisis, the authority realizes that limited exceptions to that practice may be necessary. On behalf of the authority, I thank you in advance for your patience and understanding. At this time, in order to allow more time for members of the public to comment, submit comment in advance of seven thirty, I recommend that the board consider adopting a resolution to reorder the agenda to allow the Executive Director to present his report.
All right, I'll make a motion to reorder the agenda as just stated. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. A vote, please, Director.
AM Pistado.
Yes.
Jay Louis. Uh Dee Mello.
Yes.
The rest.
Sorry, I was on mute. Yes.
And Russo.
Yes.
Jay Sanford.
Yes.
He sitesman.
Yes.
Executive Director, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman. We did have two subcommittees this past month. The Finance Committee met earlier today, and the Resident Services Policies Committee met yesterday on July seventh. Would any of the chairman like to to comment? I know we went over the Finance Committee, have a couple resolutions in front of you, and some stuff from my director's report. Is there any other comments from the Chair of the Finance Committee or any members?
Yeah, and I'll state now that I've actually made it adjust, a slight tweaked to the committee assignments from yesterday, and Commissioner Pistado is going to be the Chair of the Finance Committee. The members will stay the same. So Commissioner Pistado, do you have a, do you have any comment you want to make before the budget is presented on the Finance Committee meeting from today?
Uh, say thank you to Bill for for all of his hard work. Uh, true. Everything, every aspect of the definition of the word. You did a great job. Some of the main points, we obviously had lower rents coming in because of COVID and residents not able to pay their full rent. So that's, that's one thing that's taken a big hit. Second piece that's pretty much stuck out was we're now entering RAD for Fox Hill, so we have added revenue of roughly three hundred thousand dollars that essentially is going to be paying for the financings of that construction and of that project. So that is good news. You know, that is, that is a great program that we're taking advantage of, and it's a lot of work that our director and staff have to go through. I made a question today is why, why doesn't everyone do RAD? And the answer is simply that it's, it's, it's not that easy. It requires a lot of work, a lot of paperwork, a lot of due diligence, a lot of attention to detail, and it's, it's something that is kudos to Director leading that effort. Bill for, you know, getting things done. And it's going to be a tremendous asset for the Housing Association as it relates to our budget, and hopefully as we, as we get this, you know, going down the line at different amps. So that's, that was big. There, there are going to be some other things that we'll probably go over when we get to that, that resolution. And any questions that any of our colleagues have, we'd be more than happy to talk about. But again, I'd just like to thank everyone for their hard work in a, in a very tough year financially to, to stay afloat and get things moving in the right direction and get everyone back on back on standing feet here. So that's, that's all I got.
Yeah, it's great. Well said. And I'll just add to that, that, um, you know, an additional benefit of RAD is that, you know, basically, we're getting, we're getting the funding that comes through the, the Section Eight vouchers. Okay, they're, they're, they're essentially project-based vouchers, so they can't leave if a resident moves, let's say, to Florida, Southern Jersey, somewhere else. They don't take the voucher with them. They're project-based vouchers, so it's really, it doesn't feel any different to our tenants, but the funding stream is better. Because, you know, realistically, it's, it's private, uh, landowners are down there in Congress advocating for themselves to get a better money flow than housing authorities can get into their traditional funding setup. So it's really advantageous to go to RAD. We started with Fox Hill because it was less of a learning curve. You know, there's a high degree of difficulty in doing this, and it, it was easier to do it for a first project with our, our building that's the newest building, but we look forward to turning every asset we have, whether it's redeveloped or rehabilitated, to RAD eventually, and this is just the first step amongst many.
And Chairman, if I could just make one more comment, you reminded me about the vouchers.
Sure.
Also talked about at the Subcommittee about the tenant-based vouchers that, as, as opposed to the project-based vouchers, as the last meeting, we rescinded the vouchers going to project-based to MBS. So that, that now leaves us with the opportunity to fund five tenant-based vouchers, which will be going and hitting that list as soon as today and tomorrow. So those that are on that list, is that there's about twenty-five people on that list. You, you should be expecting a call if you're, if you're next up. We strictly go right down the list. We don't even know the names, you know, as Commissioners, we don't know the names of the people. But those residents should be expecting a call, and we'll, we'll get five people to get tenant-based vouchers and in hand, and they're able to go into the system and take any, any affordable housing entity that accepts them, they can go to. It's their choice which one they go to. Thanks.
Yeah, again, well said, and, and it's in our best interest to get that money out the door, because like many funding streams from the government, you either spend it or lose it. They'll contract it the next year if we don't spend it, and if we do spend it all, it will incrementally increase. So we definitely are going to get that money out the door before December. All right, thank you, Executive Director. Floor is yours. Oh, no, no, wait, wait, Commissioner Sitzman, Chair Sitzman of that committee, do you want to give a little overview of a Resident Services Committee meeting yesterday?
Yes, we had an excellent meeting. Sorry, Barbara, it took about two hours. We were supposed to meet for forty-five minutes. But we spent a lot of time talking about events and programming that we, that were, that will help multiple facets. So we've talked about a lot of programming for the courtyard as well as just general overview, and we're going to be partnering with Hopes and a lot of our community partners on some programs. The ones that are coming up next are a game night. Then we're having Hoboken Sings, I think, two, two game nights, Hoboken Sing, Hoboken's Got Talent, excuse me, and then we're having a sip, like a juice, a paint, like a a juice.
Creative Wellness.
Creative Wellness, yes, thank you. Did I miss anything else, Barbara?
Um, our back-to-school event.
The back-to-school barbecue on Mamba Johnson Field. And just sort of some strategic, strategic ways that we can help out, that we can work with our community partners to help residents.
Again, well said. The only thing I would, you shouldn't, you shouldn't have let Councilman Russo know that it was a two-hour meeting until he gets through his first one.
Then we'll have three hours.
There you go. All right, very good. All right, I think that's it for committee updates. So, Executive Director, floor is yours.
Very much. Resolutions as well. So getting into my report, as we know, our primary goal over the next year remains setting up the framework to place HHA phone facility and financial footing, you know, two big topics are our deteriorated facilities and our financial crisis that this organization's been in for so long, as we transform our old housing stock into facilities that'll serve our residents in all of Hoboken for the next fifty years. That's what we need to do over the next few years as we go through this process. And I think Fox Hill and our transition has taught us a lot and shown us that it really works. So we are on our way. Now, we've taken our first steps in transferring Fox Hill to RAD funding, and we've started our in-depth planning process for the rest of our housing stock. We've got two major partner groups that are working with us. One is the Enterprise Community Partners that we are able to be with because of the Technical Assistance Grant to HUD Enterprise Foundation. Many of you may have heard of them over time. They're probably the premier nonprofit housing group in the United States, and they are, got some of their most talented people working with us really to help us situate ourselves for the future, taking a look at our staff, our operations, digging into everything we do here, from our software to our maintenance, to our management, to our executive functions, that they're training, working with us, examining them, recommending changes, and we'll see some reports on that, I think, coming up in the next month or so, that they've promised to start coming out with some reports and some recommendations based on what they've found. They have spent quite a bit of time with us. We continue to have bi-weekly status calls with them. In June, we had an executive strategy session with a report soon to come, and they are going to be conducting staff training with maintenance the week of August sixteenth, and a number of other trainings that we're in process scheduling with them. They are heavily involved in the planning process with us. They have their financial and HUD regulatory experts working with us. So as we go through with our planning group, they are working in many ways as an extension of us as the Housing Authority to make sure we're on the right track, make sure our numbers are good, because as we get to the end of this process in October on planning, we're not only going to have a visual representation of what we want to do with the Hoboken Housing Stock, but we're also going to have that financial path, which is just super important and something that's never been done with us. We are going to have this situated so it can become a reality right after our planning process, and we can do the first steps of obtaining this funding and pushing our, pushing our project forward. So the second main group is our planning group. That's led by the Torrey Gallus Partners and Higher Group and Associate New Jersey Planners. We've been working with them on preparing our public planning sessions. Our first four stakeholder meetings were held in June. They were very successful. We held stakeholder meetings with the City Council, with the HHA Resident Advisory Board, with the City of Hoboken staff, and with the Housing for Hoboken Trustees. The stakeholder meetings in my, in my digital report to you, I gave you a copy of the presentation in PDF form, so you could see what's going on through that presentation, but they've been very successful. We're getting some initial comments back from each group. And, and then I'll address the next steps. We have four more stakeholder meetings coming up, what we're calling stakeholder meetings. They're going to be held within the next few weeks. These are with community leaders. So we'll have a community leader group that will be made up of folks like Senator Stack, Assemblywoman Shapiro, Commissioner Romano, and a group of community leaders that will be in that smaller breakout session with us for us to present our plans and take it out from there. Our next stakeholder meetings with educational leaders, we, we, we're reaching out to folks at Stevens, folks at the high school, folks at charter schools, to bring them together and take a look at what they think that they would like to see if we go through our planning process, and what they can contribute. Last but not least, our nonprofit groups, going from the folks that are working with us as nonprofits over to Hopes, to the, the, the churches, the other nonprofit groups that work with us, to bring them together to see initially what their vision is, and what their input is for us.
Director, if I could interrupt you for one second, Hudson County Community College with the education.
Absolutely. And if I missed any, we're really, we've really spent some time identifying what the key community education leaders are, and I don't, I didn't have the list in front of me. I want to give you some examples, but absolutely, Hudson Community College. Start talking to them. Start talking to all of them. Last but not least, we're going to have a major resident meeting as a stakeholder meeting. This is going to be a meeting that all of our residents are invited to. That meeting is going to take place on the field. We envision a large meeting with tents, a large tent, one or two, so we can invite every housing authority resident to start understanding this process more in depth. We have reached out to the Resident Advisory Board, but we haven't yet reached out to our, the rest of our resident population. We expect that meeting to be held toward the end of July. We're doing final planning on that meeting now, and that's going to be an exciting process. And I, I think a great one. We're going to have our planning team, as well as Enterprise here, for that stakeholder meeting with all of our residents, so you'll see that happening as well toward the end of July.
And Director, I know this is still variable and fluid at this point, but isn't the tentative date right now, July twenty-seventh, for the resident meeting?
Yes, that's a very tentative date, so we can kind of mark that out there. We're still making sure everything works with their travel plans on our team. Think that will work with a rain date of the twenty-eighth, in case we have a night like tonight. But very tentatively, thank you, thank you, Chairman. Sure. So that, that's, that's where we are in our planning process at the moment. It's going well. We're very impressed with the team we put together. I think most people that have met with us are impressed with the team, and we'll keep doing this and getting as much input as possible across the board. Again, our goal is that by this fall, about October, to have our plan finished, so we can move forward and start implementing things for the rest of our housing stock.
Good question.
Yes.
Is it just going to be on the field, or is there going to be some type of call-in, or if, if a resident wants to be at home and be able to still view the meeting, is there, set it up, they can join via Zoom?
We haven't figured out a way to do a call-in. We are working on a Facebook live stream on that meeting, but we haven't quite figured out a way yet to do a, like, like a Zoom call-in response on that meeting. So we're kind of back in a way to the old-fashioned invite you and come to that meeting, because we believe with a big tent, we can get, you know, proper mask wear and any social distancing that's needed, and it will be outside in a tent that will have at least two sides open. So we're working on that, and some of the tech problems on that now, Commissioner. We haven't quite figured out a way to do like the call and response.
There's multiple ways, I'm, I'm sure, you know, we can, we can figure it out, and technology is so ample that we can, you know, a resident might now be outside and get out there, and they might not feel comfortable, whatever the case, and they deserve the right to hear what's going on and.
Agree.
You know, what they want. So let's, I just urge you to hopefully figure that out and get it done.
One of our resources that we're talking to right now is the library, who's got some extensive equipment. So if, if somebody does have equipment that can help out on this, we'd be really interested in talking to them. We started pricing out what it would cost us to do a live Zoom with cameras, and the cost was just escalating astronomically to get cameras that are Zoom-capable, that can do the feed, and so we're, we're working on that. So if anyone's got any ideas, we're really open to that. We're trying to work out the tech right now. We have been in touch with the library, Dan, as we're working, and Lardis has been working with them very closely. They do have some equipment, so maybe we can pass that hurdle before we get to that meeting.
And you, you might want to.
Would also be interested in kind of communicating with you. I can have my director reach out to you guys. Any way we can help, we're, we'll be more than glad to as well.
Thank you for that. And I, and I think as that day comes, and we have people coming onto the field, assistants we have, and folks getting them signed up, getting them registered, making sure we've got the names, making sure we capture all that, and again, anyone with tech experience, we welcome.
And you'll, you'll want to reach out to City Hall regarding that as well, especially Jerry Fallow has a lot of equipment from the, the various events that are put on through her, through her area, so.
Thank you for that, Chairman.
Yeah, I know, I know she's, when it comes to the big screens and everything, I know she gave Greg Delacqua access to a screen when they showed a movie on Halloween, two Halloweens ago.
What's, uh, when are we going to let, when we going to mark this, this date down? When is it going to be official?
We, we should, we should have it official by next Wednesday, which is our next organizational meeting. So we should have, we should have a, an official date coming out on Wednesday.
And that will be a Nixol alert for, for.
Of course. Nixol alert, we'll do flyers, we'll do website posting, we'll, if somebody can grab a helicopter, we'll do a helicopter drop. Any way we can get the word out, absolutely, anyway.
And again, and again, the, the working date, that's been the working date for a few weeks now, is, is the twenty-seventh, and the, the working rain date is the twenty-eighth.
We can't, we can't all obviously attend the meeting and participate, but we can, is it, we're allowed to, to view the meeting? We just can't talk? Is that, is that how it works?
You're, you're allowed to attend, I believe, but just not talk.
Yeah, let me copy on, on that for a second. This is how Fitzpatrick, I've been thinking about that for a while, and I'm going to put out a memo to the Commissioners, Commissioner Pistado. As far as I'm concerned, under the Sunshine Law, you can attend, you can observe everything, but my advice is going to be not to actually seek the opportunity to comment publicly as part of the public, but rather to take in information and then consider at some future date, under the Sunshine Law, discussion of what has occurred among all seven Commissioners. So the strange part about that is that the safest thing under the Sunshine Law is for all seven Commissioners, in effect, to be second-class citizens for that event by being able to observe what everybody else says, but refrain from commenting during it.
Yeah, and that, that's even going to go for the, um, that's even going to go for the Members of the Rehabilitation and Redevelopment Committee. We're, we're, we want the residents to speak, the residents to dominate this meeting, so Mark's going to facilitate along with the senior member of Torrey Gallus, but, you know, we're, we're really looking for the time to be taken up by the residents giving their feedback and getting information on the record.
Is it, is it possible to, to potentially, I'm sure you talked about this, but split up the, split up this meeting into, into a different day for a different amp? So that not, not everybody is, is, is at the same event on one day? I just, I don't know, maybe, maybe it's more efficient to break it up into five amps, five days, and, and do it that way? I, I don't, I'm just.
Well, we get, we get into problems with our, our professionals are coming from various locations, some as far away as the DC area, so it doesn't really, you know, we're, we're going to spread a wider net with groups if we have, if we have more large gathering.
Commissioner Pistado, if, if you're talking about focusing on the amps for the purpose of the residents, we still have to be on the same field, because if we talk about using individual locations, we don't have space big enough to be sure that we wouldn't overwhelm the capacity. So we'd still have to meet on the field, even if we had multiple meetings.
I'm also assuming that this is in the evening hours, this meeting?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
And will we be, will we have translation services for the Spanish people that don't speak any English and don't understand it?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's already been planned in.
Actually, multiple translators, because somebody like Danny might, you know, have to be doing something else who is our go-to for translation, so we're going to try to have a few options with that.
To get the word out, are we going to use flyers? Because if we are, then I believe they have to be sent out in both languages then as well, not.
Yes, we will be. We'll be using every media tool in our belt. Been a long time since we've had a larger resume. Can't wait. And so I've really missed them. And, and I think Commissioner Pistado also, if we feel there's a need, particularly after this meeting, maybe we can talk about some follow-up resident meetings per, per amp. Because in, in the past, you know, before the pandemic, we regularly had resident meetings on each app. And, and maybe if we feel the need and folks give some feedback that they had a problem at that one, the key is getting the word out through whatever way we can, and even if they're a, a smaller type event or some hybrid, I, I don't know what we'd do, but, but I, I think that's something worth talking about, because what we want to do is get that word out, no matter how we need to get that out and how much time it takes.
Yeah, because we're, we're going to be, we're going to be continuing these, these stakeholder meetings into, into the fall. You know, I, I've suggested, and everybody's on board with trying to get a table at the Arts and Musical Fest at the, I believe is at the very beginning of October. So, you know, this, this, this isn't the end of the process, this is just step two. So.
And there's another major meeting coming up in August.
Right.
We are going to be holding a charrette in August, which is probably going to be a two- or three-day event where we will be inviting all of Hoboken, not just our residents, but all of Hoboken, to come in and talk to the planners, to give their ideas, to start formulating some initial plans for how folks want to see the Housing Authority renovated and. The Housing Authority renovated and or redeveloped. Um, and so many of you that have been to a charrette, uh, know the idea is to have general meetings and then breakout sessions. Uh, start taking a look at design concepts, start taking a look at social concepts on what people would like to see in the plan. That is gonna be held as a follow-up sometime in August. Um, so we're gonna have a busy couple months coming up here. And that will also, we envision being on the field with maybe a number of tents. With an area that can give some initial design concepts, as well as an area that might be addressing regulatory stuff. As well as a a main meeting area that we can give general presentations. So the word is really gonna be out, I think by the end of August. Uh, we will really start seeing this buzz here in Hoboken. Um, that we're we're moving forward, we're serious, and we have a very, very talented team behind us. It's not just myself and a couple of the Commissioners sitting in a room with the staff saying this is what we ought to do. Um, th- this is gonna be an extensive process. Can't wait. Look forward to all of you getting your getting your opinions known and 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 getting your input, so. We can come out in October with a really good plan. Um, all right, to continue my report, Fox Hill Gardens renovation work is being specked out now. Um, Resident Advisory Board will be meeting on this coming Tuesday, July thirteenth. Um, our policing security issues. Um, welcome to Sergeant Crofts that's with us, I think for the first time uh tonight. Uh, Sergeant, if you're still on. Well, there you are, you're on the Hollywood Squares thing. Welcome, I I know we've been uh uh working closely with the Hoboken Police Department over the past. Week or so particularly, um, you know, so um. Uh, want to again, thank you for everything you folks are doing. Um, I know we've had a couple of events recently, including last night, uh, which was frightening. Um, so we've got work to do here. And I think we spent a lot of time as well at the Resident Services Committee talking about about security. Um, so I don't know if there's anything you want to share with us, um, Sergeant?
Yes, so good evening, everyone. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh Director Recco, Michael Russo. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, today's my first meeting, so let me apologize in advance. Uh, for any etiquette and or lapse at the corum I may have going forward, so uh, can everybody hear me first of all?
Okay, and welcome.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I just took over the duties from Sergeant Joe Luciano. Um, so going forward, I will be the point of contact and the Housing Authority Liaison. Uh, unfortunately, we did speak about an incident that occurred last night. Um, which we cannot connect at the moment, but two days ago, uh, we had another one at the same location, two shootings. Uh, at three oh one Jackson Street. Um, I'm on this job for twenty-six years, I never had something back-to-back like that. Um, so of course, we're taking it extremely seriously, as well as everyone down the Housing Authority as well. Um, unfortunately, I can't get into any of the aspects of the ongoing investigation, which I'm sure everyone here can understand. However, um, I do have a little bit of a concern that occurred last night. While our detectives were doing their job. So first off, let me just say that um. Protection of life is our first priority. And during that time when this happened, uh, our detectives were doing their job, and before you knew it, we're only talking within. Within minutes of the investigation, we had objects thrown at us from residents uh of the Housing Authority. Whether it was eggs or what have you, uh, won't get into that because that unfortunately is under investigation as well. Uh, it's a little concerning that. For the small majority of residents, the protection of all the residents is overwhelming. When you're having the few impede our investigation, possibly cause uh injury to any of the officers that were down there. Um, now, before anyone says, well, how do we know it's residents? We don't know for a hundred percent sure, but. When shot, when the shots are fired and everyone starts running away. I guess it's a safe assumption to say that, or presumption, that the people remaining live there. Uh, and then while you're doing your job and doing the investigation, which is very tedious, because we need to. Cross all our Ts, dot our, dot all of our Is, while we're doing that, um, we have to worry about our safety where we have objects thrown at us. Um, and it's within minutes of everyone scattered. So there's a good chance to say that it's most likely residents that live down there. And it's 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 disheartening because uh everyone on this job I could speak for, for the years I've been here. Um, understand what we have to do. Yes, we knew what we signed up for, so before anyone says anything like that, let me know, or let me let you know. We understand that. But for every two steps we take, we have to take five steps backwards just to make sure our safety is uh. Is there that we can do more for the residents, and it just kind of slows the investigation down. So unfortunately, um. With what happened last night and what happened on Monday, so you had Monday, the fifth, and then you had last night at about eleven thirty PM. Uh, I know our detective bureau, Sergeant Collins was supposed to be on with me tonight. To speak about what he can and cannot tell everyone uh yet about the investigation. Uh, but it was a little troubling last night. We did have all of our four-to-twelve shift respond to this location and um. It was um troubling, to say the least. Um, I don't know much, how much further I can go, I don't want to beat a dead horse, I just want to let you know that we are working on it. And our Investigations Bureau is handling from this point on. So. Again, I just wanted to thank everyone, I want to let everyone know that I will be their contact, my name is on the screen, my. My email address, I could provide phone number, anyone needs anything, please let me know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you very much.
First of all, um, I live in Harrison Gardens, unfortunately, where this happened, so I didn't witness the actual shooting, I did hear it. I called the police, I informed the director and and some other, and some of the other um Commissioners of what happened, but. What I want to say is that from what I witnessed with the officers, these officers worked through the night. It was one, two, three o'clock in the morning, they were still out there, they had their K nine units out there. They they were full force down here, trying to assess the situation, make sure that everyone was safe. So I know that sometimes I can be very critical, because to me, it's personal, I live down here. And, you know, sometimes I, you know, I complain, but yesterday, I must say that I could not be prouder. Of what the Hoboken Police Department did. Sergeant Collins was all over the place last night. This morning, I woke up at eight thirty in the morning and officers were still there. They were still there working the scene and making sure that 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 everyone was safe. It's so disheartening to me as a resident to hear what happened to you guys, to the officers. Um, I, you know, as a resident, all I can do is apologize, obviously, I don't know what happened, and it's a shame that these individuals. Um, are doing this to you, but Director Recco, what I'm asking you is that if we are able to identify these individuals. Something has to be done. We cannot continue to to kind of, oh, let's do a cease-of-decease letter, because. This is not only the residents, the children are out there, everybody's out there, everybody's life at stake. And for you in the middle of an investigation to be throwing things at the officers who are trying to keep us safe. It shouldn't be tolerated, and it definitely should be. I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm hoping that we can definitely take some legal action against these individuals. And under the one-strike policy or any other policy, any loophole that we can find. To have them evicted, I think that they should be, because they don't belong down here, that's not what we want here. And that's my opinion as a resident, because I live here, so. Thank you again, Officer, I really appreciate the job you guys did. And I do look forward to working with you and the director and as well as um Sergeant Giganti, who have been. Who, me and her have been in contact, we have some ideas. Um, you know, to work with you guys to kind of resolve the issues. I've lived here fifteen years and I've never been. More afraid than I am today to live where I live.
Well, I'm sorry to hear, I'm sorry to hear that you have to say that, but I do appreciate the kind words, so just know that. Uh, we appreciate it, but we also know that it's hard to come by. And we will be, regardless of what happens, we will be doing our job going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, and and Commissioner Reyes, you know, we take this very seriously and in 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 a partnership with the Police Department and our legal counsel. Uh, we will do everything we possibly can, because. Couldn't agree with your sentiments more, it's really difficult. I might suggest, uh, again, that we spend some time, maybe in the next couple of weeks and. Um, invite the sergeant and uh and and a few of us to get together and talk about some strategies. Um, I I couldn't be more impressed with the work that Commissioner Reyes, Commissioner Seitzman are doing uh with the. Uh, the concept of of putting something positive into the courtyard area. Uh, not only enforcement, but but filling that space with positive activities. And you folks have stepped up to the plate on that. Um, and and the more of that we can do, the better, but that's not the only strategy, and I think we need to get together and put our heads together and say, what are we gonna do about? Short term and long term of that courtyard area, because it's bigger than all of us.
Director, I sent you an email, and I believe um Ms. Seitzman was also involved in it, and anyone who was on the Security. Committee, after speaking with Sergeant Giganti earlier today, we do want to come up with a meeting with some residents who are vocal. To kind of um speak with the police, meet with the police, um, and and just build a better partnership with the police, you know. Unfortunately, they have the job that when they're called down here, it's always looked at as they're coming down, they're the bad guys, you know, they're coming down here to move you out of the way. And so forth, and our goal, I think mine and Erica's, is to change that. To change it to where, no, they're not only here when bad things happen, let's see them in a positive light, let's do more community policing. Make them more comfortable, make the residents more comfortable with speaking and 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 addressing the officers and not being afraid. That, you know, that if something is said or something happens, that they can't speak to them. So that's our goal, our ultimate goal. Um, again, I sent you guys a, an email, and I look forward to, hopefully, I think it's next Thursday that we're planning to um do something, so.
Great, and the, and that's, that's one of the many reasons why I made you the the Chair of the Security Committee. So Sergeant, just so you know, we have a security committee, they've actually had a history of meeting with uh. Uh, members of the police force, and uh, that security committee is chaired by Commissioner Reyes and then Commissioner Pistoro and Councilman Russo are also on that committee, so.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with all of you. Um, on uh, probably the big news on on COVID nineteen issues as we progress. Um, is that we have published some interim community room use um guidelines. Uh, very recently, uh, I guess to sum it up, we are opening up our community rooms for some limited use. Um, we we are still not comfortable under state and federal and. CDC guidelines of having our community rooms open for private parties. Where people come in and congregate on a on a youth basis, but for activities such as resident-sponsored bingo. Um, some of our our uh our our nonprofit partners such as uh Ray Rodriguez and the Karate Program. Um, some other programs, we're opening up along with social distancing. Uh, to be able to use our community rooms for the first time in over a year, so we're excited to be making some progress um on that. Um, we continue to have our testing activities uh going on and our vaccine activities. Our next testing is coming up this Friday, and uh our next vaccine vaccination. Uh, uh, day is July fifteenth. Um, that's the big news probably on COVID. I do attach a COVID nineteen budget. As attachment three to your report. Our Housing for Hoboken Crew Group did meet on June sixteenth. Uh, for a presentation of the stakeholder meeting, they also met on June twenty-third. Uh, to take a deep dive into the financing and budget status at Fox Hill Gardens. Um, Lisa Petrowski of NW Financial and Bill Ketchen were uh in attendance at that. Uh, we appreciate your efforts on that, I think we got a brand-new understanding of where we're going. Um, with Fox Hill and the great benefits of going over to Brad there. Um, I do have an attachment on vacancies. Um, we had very little movement this month. Our forty-two units um are with our contractor. They have unfortunately experienced delays due to supply problems. Uh, this is a national issue, particularly with cabinets and appliances. Uh, it's been very difficult for the contractor and for us to find alternatives. For the number of appliances and kitchen cabinets um to turn our units. We have been working closely with the contractor, trying to find alternative. Um, our best estimate at this point is a return of a number of units in September. Maybe right at the end of August, but September, and then the rest by November. I do understand the delay in the contract and and the delay of these units that are under contract is frustrating. It's frustrating for a number of individuals waiting for transfers or for new ad admissions. Uh, but we need to repair these units before we occupy them. Um, we're sorry for delays, we're frustrated, it does have a ripple effect on our transfer and occupancy plans. Um, units that we expected to be done in July, August are now moving over to the September, November schedule. Um, an example might be a family that's waiting for a transfer. Um, we identified a unit for them, um, because somebody was under overhoused. But that person that was gonna be transferred because they're under overhoused. Um, has got to wait for the unit to be completed that they are gonna be transferred in. So the original family that was gonna be transferred into their unit has to wait even longer for the transfer, it it's it's frustrating. Uh, but it's, it's what we must do. Um, so we we do apologize, and I'll say this to a number of people out there. That are waiting for transfers, they originally thought we were gonna be in July or August. We've now got the delays in that construction schedule, they're gonna take us a little longer, and I know it's frustrating for some folks out there. Uh, but uh, it it's a national issue with supply chains, and and we continue to look for every avenue we can.
Director, if I could ask you a question?
Sure thing.
Uh, Director, what's the um, what would be the procedure if in fact there was the ability to find? Alternatives for cabinets or appliances? Um, it it, because it it kind of rings so true. I feel like I'm I'm back on the board. Years ago, and we're dealing with the same issue when it comes to. Uh, occupancy of units and and filling units and making sure that units are um are. You know, rehabbed or whatever it may be, uh, and this issue seems to be a twenty-year issue. Um, and it's just unacceptable, in my opinion. So if in fact there's the ability to find an alternative appliance dealer or an alternative cabinet maker, what in fact? Uh, can we do to do that? Is there a bid issue? Is it a subcontracting issue? What is that, so that we could kind of move that forward as fast as possible?
Sure, all of those issues are on the table, we always have to take a look at our bidding issues um as a public entity. Uh, and and there are subcontracting issues with the contractor. In our last job meeting that was this past week, we did tell the contractor. And we instructed him to look for alternatives and said that we are also gonna look for alternatives. And that if we can find that alternative, we will be communicating with them, and we'd work something out within the contract. That we do some type of a contract swap where we'd uh be able to maybe purchase them and supply them directly to to the contractor. And then the contractor would then be able to um have his order come to us and store it. We'd figure out that problem before it was over. Uh, so we've had that discussion in depth with them. Again, this, I don't know what you've experienced in the past, this is a national issue right now. Um, the construction materials are are often very hard to get right now. Uh, we find on our own appliances that we're, that we're normally get within uh two, two to four weeks. Uh, we've been waiting three to um, three to five months to get an appliance order in. And it's very, very frustrating. I think what we found, Councilmen, is that. Um, before our elevator project where we had to hold a number of units out as vacant. We continually had a long record of ninety-five to ninety-eight percent occupancy. And we will be back there. Once we get through this big push with these contract units. Um, we are going to, and we're predicting that by December. Even with this delay, we'll be back up to at least a ninety-five percent occupancy. At all of our units, and we'll be able to maintain that ninety-five percent occupancy or ninety-eight percent occupancy. Out into the future. So, you know, I don't know if that answers your question, but we're always struggling with that issue.
Yeah, I mean, it it answers the question, but it it's, it it's just frustrating, because. Uh, like I said, I mean, it seems to always um be an issue, whether it's. Supply chain issue, whether it's uh contractor issue, subcontractor issue, like I said. Uh, twenty years ago, you know, fifteen years ago, it was the same, it was the same issue. Um, so it's, it's just one of those things that uh I'm sure our residents see. Uh, every other building going up in town or outside of town, and they don't have problems getting their cabinets and. and they don't have problems getting their cabinets and they don't have their problems getting their appliances. And I'm just trying to see if there's a way that we could kind of tap into the developers in Hoboken or outs even outside of Hoboken to see if they may have some answers for us and figure out what the legal side of that is on on the backend just to get those appliances and get those cabinets. And I mean, I I know there's local cabinet makers in Hoboken that do fabulous work, but again, all comes down to cost, all comes down to timing. And my my goal is to try to get that done as fast as possible.
Agreed, Councilor.
Mark, if I may comment on on this circumstance in particular, this is how in this case, we have a contract with a contractor for these forty-two units. And the problem is his obtaining supply. Now, let me assure the Commissioner that, as Mark just said, this is a national problem that everybody is experiencing. I just got a planning board approval for a major generator system for a client at another location. And they turned around and went to their contractor and said, okay, put it in. Then the contractor came back and said, it's going to take thirty-one weeks to get it. It's something that we've never had such a problem about. But we actually have an advantage here. We already have a contract with a contractor and under ordinary circumstances, we'd hold them to a delay. And we do have a provision in the contract. We wouldn't win that in this case because you've seen all the publicity about electrical supplies and lumber supplies. And the contractors are going to get a certain amount of flexibility in time as a result of that. However, I very much advise, Mark, that we do not try to buy the things that we need ourselves. That creates a separate procurement problem, as the Commissioner just alluded to. I very much advise that even if we have to negotiate with the contractor for some more leeway for him, perhaps even a change order, we have him buy the equipment from an alternative location and put that into his contract. You're going to do much better in terms of your procurement process if you do it that way. I would not advise us buying it. That's going to create a separate procurement problem.
Understood, Councilor.
And if if the Commissioner has suggestions about alternatives, I I've known nothing about the price. You may want to consult with the Commissioner about referring those folks to the contractor.
Sure, absolutely. I most certainly will do that. Do we have any in our contract with the contractor? Do we have any any clauses for damages, for timelines?
Yeah, hundred and twenty days usually and five hundred dollars a day if they don't comply. And it's in this contract and there's no question, under ordinary circumstances, we'd enforce that and it would cost them money.
Yeah.
I wouldn't necessarily concede that, but I know that if I end up in court right now trying to enforce those kind of provisions, I'm going to lose because as Mr. Echo said, everybody's suffering through these problems. And they have to work them out. The way to do it is to negotiate. We got this planning board approval last week and one of my guys came in yesterday and said thirty-one weeks. And we were absolutely stunned with how long that was going to be. And there's been scrambling since. It it is a problem that all owners are going to have to work with. I can't imagine, and and I'm talking about a private owner situation. I can't imagine that any private owner isn't suffering through this too right now.
Yeah, you know, I I was actually very randomly watching the the Squawk, the Closing Bell Show on CNBC today. That actually dominated the entire program. They were talking about just nationwide. Supply chains are just a mess right now and every 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 industry is dealing with it, so.
Commissioner, I don't know anything about what you may have experienced before, but I always have absolutely no respect for a contractor that doesn't make his deadlines under ordinary circumstances. And I've always advised my-
We agree on that.
And I've always advised my owners to enforce that. And it could cost the contractor a lot of money. Since I've been at the Hoboken Housing Authority, I think we've in general always completed our jobs on time.
The, I just might add that the cabinets should be delivered in three to four weeks and the units in about six weeks, starting in about six weeks. So it wouldn't really make sense to change the supplier because it would take much longer.
Yeah, I believe that the cabinets are already on order and to Commissioner Lewis's point, should be delivered at the end of the month. I I think that if there are alternatives that we can suggest to the contractor for the appliances, that would be helpful. I think if the appliances are going to push things out. But I believe that the cabinets and countertops, countertops are being replaced in all forty-two units are anticipated to be delivered at the end of this month.
And we're just looking for refrigerators and stoves for the units?
That is correct, refrigerators and stoves.
The contractors are here daily, every day? They're in these units daily? Or is there a time when they're not on location?
Weekends and holidays.
Weekends and holidays are the only days that they're not working in the units?
That is correct.
And how have we prioritized the units? Because I know I've spoken with seniors who says that, who say that they've seen the contractors in their buildings. But the complaints that I'm getting as the Commissioner for the Resident Commissioner is that the problems that we're having are down here are in the residential ones. So like, like where I'm confused is how did the seniors' buildings become the priority and not the family units?
This contract does not include any senior units, so I I don't know if that's a different contractor in there or that could also be our force account labor that that is working in the senior units. But this contract for the forty-two units is only at Andrew Jackson, Harrison, and there's one unit in Christopher Columbus.
So so probably what the feedback you're getting from Commissioner Reyes is from our force account crews that are working on our elderly efficiency in one bedroom units. And so they're all working on separate projects, on two separate vacancy initiatives we've got going right now.
So just just for some reference, just as we're we're having this conversation, I reached out to a developer in Jersey City. He basically said there should be no delays at all for refrigerators and stoves. He's going to get me a contact for a salesperson. So I'll have that to you to later tonight, Director, or tomorrow.
As an hour, great. So in in tandem with our efforts to turn the units, we have opened up our waiting list, as I think most folks know. The waiting list will be open until four o'clock PM on July, Monday, July twelfth. So far, we have received four thousand four hundred and twenty-six applications for the Public Housing Program. Four thousand four hundred and twenty-six and three thousand eight hundred and eight applications for the Fox Hill site under RAD. Huge numbers, just just huge numbers. The need out there is is huge and the interest is huge. Once we do do a follow-up, once we do close, a follow-up questionnaire will be sent to the folks that put in their initial application to request some further information from them, standard procedure on a public housing application. And then once that information is back, we will be holding our lottery and we expect to have our lottery in mid-August. So once that information is back, we'll be holding our lottery probably in mid-August. So we can look up right around that second or third week of August, actually hold the lottery. Our software system, we will be doing training on our software system during July. We're starting next week. We hope to be fully functional in mid-August. Our our data migration is in progress. We've got approximately eighty percent of our data functional in the new system as of today. It's just a gargantuan effort in migrating our data, making sure it's clean. We're using this opportunity to take many years of bad data, clean up the data, make sure it's good, making sure our resident and financial information is good. As we've said before, this software system brings us in to the modern age. We've had a software system that has been dysfunctional for quite a while. It took us a while to find the money to make this transition and we couldn't be more excited. We're already seeing some great benefits just just from running what we've got on our desktop so far in a in a kind of a test pattern situation. So we expect to be running coming up in August. Really excited about that.
Mister Mister Merchant, are you still singing its praises?
A huge effort by the staff, right?
Good.
Got to hit the red button.
I am on a phone. I'm a bad connection. Yes, absolutely. And it's been instrumental right now for the opening of the waiting list. It's giving us real data as it's coming in. And now we can already start to see the the benefits. Once once we're there, it's going to be so much easier. I know so much of what we do is data-driven and statistical, so to be able to pull that information in a timely fashion is going to be important. So yes.
And it works better than that mute button just worked for you, right?
Yeah. On the old system, for example, if we were asked a question about tenant population, age ranges, we had to do hand counts. Things like that just weren't, we weren't able to do with our software system. So this is going to be huge for us in in many ways, many, many ways, financially, financial data as well as resident data, resident intake. We do have our special capital projects. I just want to say real quickly that that effort isn't over. We're going to be very busy the next few weeks on training on this system, so bear with us as we we're going to be closing down a couple offices, some offices for a half-day to make sure our staff can get fully trained. We're going to be going down the road on this to get, in order to get us up and running. Our special capital projects, the Housing Finance Agency funding is approaching the end of what I'm calling now the first phase. Our elevators, our roofs, some exterior work, we're we're getting there. We've had a very, very successful project here. We stabilized our elevators. And the Adams Elevator, to my understanding, although I didn't get there today, the last elevator at Adams was open to the public today. Yay, so we've got both elevators operating over at Adams now. And that's the last of our elevator project. That will be behind us now. I I just couldn't be more excited that that we've managed to achieve this. What an effort to this by the staff over the last year to make this happen. We do have a little add-on here, which is why I'm calling it Phase One. The Housing Finance Agency where this funding originated required us to put a a a contingency aside in case things needed to be done during the course, change order work. In this project, we've had very little change order work. The project has went extremely well. That's the good news. The next good news is that we have money left over because we did not use the contingency money. So we are now going back with the help of our attorney, with the help of our team to go back to the Housing Finance Agency and say, we've got this contingency. We want to use it and here's what we want to use it for. That money will be limited to either Adams or Andrew Jackson. We've identified work at Adams with the boiler systems. We've identified work at Andrew Jackson primarily for the exterior work, which which is work that got hit by Hurricane Sandy many, many years ago and was never never addressed. So we have got the letter out to the Housing Finance Agency. We are, our next step is to set up an in-person meeting with them to go over these items. And we think we've gotten there, kind of nod of consensus that this is going to move forward. So our Phase Two on this is going to be moving forward with work at Andrew Jackson North. So we're going to continue, move ahead with that. That's great. Our Harrison Roofing Project is about ninety-five percent complete. We have got everything done except some punchline list items. And to hit an old theme, the contractor is experiencing a delay due to the supply of the fascia materials. So he can't quite finish the fascia work on the project until his materials come in. But it's not leaking. Everything's in good shape. We just can't close out the project until that material comes in and and we can finish. Our great gate upgrades at Fox Hill and Adams is almost complete. They will be, they should be functional within the week. They work beautifully. They're just a great addition to both sites. A small change order will be in front of you tonight to add a pedestrian key card. At one of the sites, we did find that we do have a pedestrian entrance that didn't have a key card. So we've asked to put a pedestrian key card entrance onto that to complete the security around the same building. We'll be talking about that during the resolution shortly. Our installation of new compactors is under contract. We do also have the seven emergency generators, which will which will complete the replacement of all of our generators under design. We've had a bit of a delay because the A and the engineer is having to work out a gas supply problem with the utility and with the city. They're working on that issue now. There's been a, they they found in design that the specified emergency generator needs a little more gas pressure than is supplied currently. They're working on it and they'll get back to us. The specifications are being developed for the facade repairs at Monroe and Adams Gardens. I do want to say this clearly, in in light of what has gone on in Miami and our national tragedy and 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 the talk of the building collapse in Miami, I want to be very clear and like to reassure reassure everyone that the facade work at Monroe and Adams that needs to be done has nothing to do with the structural integrity of those buildings, nothing. What we have as a problem at Monroe and Adams is a facade problem. There's a layer of brick that's a facade. It's not a structural member. It doesn't hold up the building. It is a facade, if you will, a curtain on the outside of the building. We have had lintels that over the years have retained water. Those lintels have rusted out and and the water is getting behind them and it's expanding and contracting and knocking some bricks out of that facade and displacing those bricks. It is not into the structural members whatsoever at Fox Hill, Monroe, or Adams. And I can understand, and I was too during Miami and what happened there, to take a look at that again. But that that is not a structural problem in any way, shape, or form. So those of you that are living there, those of you that have that question, those buildings are structurally sound.
Can I just chime in real quick, if you will? One, two things about that. One, is there reports, reports done yearly to certify, or obviously not yearly, but every twenty years, every thirty years to certify the structural integrity of these buildings?
I don't know of such a report. I can certainly look in to see if there's anything that is required out there on that type of a report. What we did is ask our A and E while we're going through to make sure that he's not seeing any structural damage, but I don't know if there's anything legally that is required, Mr.?
Okay, then two. You know, obviously-
I can answer the, I can answer the first part about legally if you want, Mark. There is no legal requirement, as has been alluded to in Florida, to be imposed in the future that there be structural certifications on buildings. There is discussion now in a lot of legislatures, including New York and New Jersey, about imposing such a thing, but there isn't now. The other thing is that there are indeed reports that have been done because of our consideration of switching to RAD at all our locations with respect to all of our locations in terms of the general status of the buildings. And I don't believe that any of those reports has indicated a structural concern.
Right, just, you know, obviously our buildings are not cosmetically- Right, um, just, you know, obviously our buildings are not uh cosmetically look, when you look at them, they're, they're in terrible shape and very, very old, but uh I would assume that they can't be in, I don't think they're in the level of damage to be a, a risk of collapsing, but maybe there's something we could look into to see if we can get a, a, a simple inspection to see the integrity of all these buildings. And then the, the second point was that uh the facade question, I, I would like to see that in writing. Not that I don't trust uh anyone's word, but I would like to see a, a piece of paper from the engineer uh or inspector that, that says that that facade issue is not a, not a structural problem. You know, just in case, look, if something happens, uh, we're, we're not liable to say, hey, we didn't do anything. We didn't, we didn't look at it. We just, uh, we asked one person and they, they, they told us it wasn't, so we believe them. So I don't know if that's possible, if, if we can get that, uh, something in writing that's uh certified that there's no structural damage to that building.
Yeah, I'll go back to him for an opinion. He knows the building uh very, very well. So I, I, I wouldn't think that that would be much of a problem, but you know, we'll go back with them.
Thanks.
Because he's been turning that building inside out. Um, on the uh, okay, so that's that part, uh, management report. Uh, we're still struggling with the New Jersey court system. I, I think uh, Counselor, you might want to um give whether it's Matt or Harold on uh what they think the future of the coming months with the court system.
Sure. Um, so uh, the eviction moratorium uh federally is expected to end uh at the end of July, and all indications are that it will not be extended. However, the eviction moratorium in the state of New Jersey has been extended until uh January first, two thousand twenty-two. And unless something is done before then, there is legislation before the legislature to end the moratorium with respect to everything other than non-payment of rent for low-income tenants. If that were to be enacted, it would be immediate. However, in our case, our residents are low-income, so the mor- moratorium on evictions for non-payment of rent would stay in place until the end of the year um with the potential for an extension. But it looks like it would be the end of two thousand twenty-one. We would be able to file, we, we can file now, however, we can't proceed with the eviction actions. That's the moratorium. So we would be able to file and proceed with other uh lease violations, whether it be failure to recertify, failure to transfer um other uh lease violations. We may be able to proceed with that before the end of the year, but that is very much up in the air and in the hands of the state of New Jersey.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, management continues to focus on our software transition. Um, as Commissioner Pissato mentioned earlier on the housing choice vouchers, we, we will be issuing uh five new tenant-based vouchers with, within the week. And we'll be continuing to keep a close eye on that budget as we go into the future. Um, on maintenance, we continue the process of, of getting ready for our next REACT inspection. Uh, we are going to have our own REACT inspector in at the end of July uh for an inspection uh to give us, if you will, a fake REACT inspection. Uh, it's just so important that we pass this year. Uh, we've done this in the past. We're going to have our REACT inspector in. He will be sharing those results with us and doing a total staff training on um, on REACT. We've done these. We've trained our staff internally. Uh, we've been working hard. I think Sammy, who's on the meeting with us finally, I know Sammy had an emergency earlier. Uh, thanks Sammy for getting on with us. Um, he's been leading the charge uh with maintenance to um do those very persnickety REACT finding resolutions and making that happen. Uh, but I think it will be good as we go toward that to have that, our own REACT inspection and our training done again. Um, on finance, uh, the audit is complete for twenty nineteen. And somebody uh, I hear some noise.
It's uh Sammy, Sammy on the bottom, his audio. He's got to mute himself.
There you go, Sammy. Um, so um, the audit is complete. That we'll be talking about that in just a few minutes. Uh, the proposed twenty-two, twenty twenty-two budget is also in front of you. And I do attach our resident services report um as attachment five. Danny, do you want to say anything in particular about your report this month?
Uh, yes, Director. Hello, everyone. Um, Commissioner Seism and yourself spoke on uh some of the events and programs that we're planning uh into the future and also spoke on some of the testing and also vaccination that's uh occurring at two twenty-one Jackson Street. I wanted to quickly focus on some of the initiatives uh from Commissioner Seism on the Senior Body Program. It's been going extremely well. Um, we thanked the volunteers from all that and some other members of our Hoboken community for um giving up some of their time to connect with some of the senior residents and engage them uh in terms of services, resources, and support. So we really appreciate them uh for working with the Hoboken Housing Authority and giving us that support so that way we can help our senior residents. Uh, additionally, the, in terms of service, as you know, the Hoboken Food Pantry has been working with the Hoboken Housing Authority for over a year and a half now, uh, providing needed groceries to our families. And they continue to do their bi-monthly distribution onsite at the three eleven Harrison Street Courtyard uh bi-monthly. So we continually thank them for their amazing support. In addition to their onsite distribution at the Housing Authority, um, they also have at their location uh on Washington Street, a special family hours as well, which include additional um items that are not uh available for uh the onsite distribution such as uh baby formula, uh wipes and other items. So we really appreciate their amazing support uh to the Hoboken Housing Authority community. Also, we thank our program providers that were approved on the RFP to provide services to the Housing Authority. Uh, community lifestyles uh begin this week, their summer camp. So really thank them for their amazing outreach to our community. Amazing True Society continues with their self-defense uh classes and training in addition to uh some guitar lessons on our plan. And uh the Boys and Girls Club, of course, began their annual summer basketball league at the Housing Authority. They started this week. So really appreciate these program providers for their continued support uh to the Hoboken Housing Authority community. And thanks to the Commissioner for uh approving these program providers to uh meet the needs of our residents. Thank you, Director. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Daniel, that concludes my report.
All right, great.
I'm sorry, Chairman, I'd just like to add to what Danny said. I know that we spoke last night about our game night, which was scheduled to happen at the Harrison Gardens. But in lieu of what has been happening, um, today, we decided that we're not going to cancel the game day. We're going to continue to have it, but instead of having it in Harrison Garden, we decided to do it over in the playground by five, fifth and Jackson, where the playground and the basketball court is. Um, we're going to do it from one to five. It's going to be a day event instead of an evening event. And we have actually reached out to the other providers, the summer camps, to bring their children um to that area so that we can um have our children's game day there. Um, we're going to be providing basketball so they can play basketball, they can play in the playground. We're going to have arts and crafts. We're going to provide them with lunch. So it's going to be a fun day next Wednesday from one to five. We just thought Harrison Garden was not the safest place at this time to hold that, an event like that, so.
Thank you, Father.
All right, great.
Take it.
Thank you, everybody. And, and, you know, so good to hear about the elevator project. Maybe we should take a cue from the city and have a ribbon cutting uh when our last elevator is unveiled.
The roof.
All right. Um, reports on committees we did at the start of your report. Uh, there's no unfinished business for tonight, so move on to number seven. A resolution to, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven point zero one, a resolution to approve.
If I could interrupt quickly, Mr. Chair?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Portion, thank you. Sorry. Um, all right, so who do we have queued up to speak from the public? Uh, Ms. Priestley?
Uh, we have Adrian Rollins.
All right. Adrian Rollins, are you on? I won't start the clock until I know you're with us.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, I'm going to start you right now, okay?
Okay, we have a process for work orders and usually it's calling in. Residents have to pray they come right away or within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Or in my case, I email it, schedule it, and pray that they come unscheduled. Need to change how maintenance responds to calls, to call-ins, and make sure they adhere to scheduled times as well. Or within thirty minutes to a half hour for leaks, thirty minutes to an hour for leaks. Not everyone is suffering if the rich developers are getting their stuff and HHA cannot get anything as in cabinets and um appliances. And what happened to all the appliances that were moved into five forty Marshall Drive over the last year, which I happen to see, they were moving a lot of refrigerators and stoves into, I'm assuming, an empty apartment. And now we don't have any. I don't know why. I had a gardening idea that I've discussed with uh Ms. Seism. Getting the seniors and teenagers to team up to use the area on Third and Adams, which would be under two twenty Adams. Uh, there's a big space there. There are seniors that love gardening and maybe they can teach the younger generation how to garden to provide fruits and vegetables for our residents only, not for any one outside. Has to be for Hoboken Housing residents because we're the ones that are low-income and things of that nature. And it could start spring of twenty twenty-two. Could be amazing. You can get donations. I'm pretty sure there are places who would be willing to help out. Uh, my son used a spray foam to seal two sections of the front of the building, eliminating the water bugs. The landing before you go into the building uh is coming apart from the wall anyway, but him sealing it with the spray foam, no one has seen any bugs come out of there and come through the front door in about two weeks. So you should thank him for that. Uh, why open the waiting list when you have folks who are waiting on their transfers and they're waiting longer than necessary? We know there are some vacant units uh that have gotten their cabinets and appliances. Uh, as stated before, five forty had a whole bunch of them because I witnessed it myself. Uh, and if not, why can't vouchers be given to those who are in emergency situations? Or why can't emergency situations be put up in hotels at housing's expense until their units are completed because uh housing is failing? I have nine complaints already within the last two weeks and a few of them that I've been working on for over six months that have been neglected by the Housing Authority. Managers need to stick to keeping residents informed weekly as promised. I know of residents that were told by their managers and by Mr. Merchant that they would be informed weekly and they are not. I also have a few emails that I've sent out and I'm waiting for responses in emails. That's all. And also, you still haven't given my sister a new stove uh due to the fact that she can't use the one that she has because she's afraid of it blowing up in her face. She needs a new stove. We've discussed that before and I disagree with the Housing Authority's findings. The stove top is fine. It's the oven itself. The oven is what she cannot use. She told you guys this last month. We've been talking about it since December twenty nineteen. Let's get something done and not at the, at the health.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Um, Director, if we could maybe get somebody to take another look at the stove?
And Ms. Rollins. We can. We, we've done a very thorough inspection of it uh by our trained person. We haven't come back up again. She hasn't found a thing wrong with the stove.
Uh, quick, quick comment. It, uh, as regards to the maintenance request. Uh, I know the, the former director who left us was working on a mobile app to submit maintenance requests. So is there a status of that?
Uh, no, but I think we can talk to our new software provider. I know that was not possible with our old software. And uh, Frank, I don't know whether uh PHA Web maybe for an additional has a software component to it.
I don't know if they have the ability for a resident to do that, but I can certainly find out. I do know that there will be the ability for our employees to enter work orders um from their phones, from their computers, wherever they are. I'm not sure if, if there is uh something yet available for tenants, but that's certainly a good question to ask.
Yeah, like uh in my building, in my building, we have the ability to, you know, you put in the app, uh, I don't know, AC's broke and then.
Yeah, that would be great, absolutely.
It's timestamped, it's submitted to maintenance. They, they prioritize everything. And then when it's finished, that you put, they, they put a picture of whatever's fixed, you know, something like that. I don't think it's too much technology. Maybe we can incorporate that into the new software. Thanks.
I'm sorry, Chairman, I also have a question.
For yours.
I wanted to ask, um, this past month, I witnessed about five maintenance workers working on moving a stove into three ten Jackson. It was beyond me on how many people we needed to get that job done. I'm not quite sure why we needed the people that are cleaning the buildings and then we needed other people that I guess are the ones that fixed the problems also involved in that. And it's not the first time. So I'm wondering, why is it that we need that many people? If it's a stove, shouldn't it be just the person that's actually installing it and maybe an helper and that's it? Because, I mean, we, as a housing authority, have so much, so many things going on with maintenance that I think it's a waste of, of staff and time to have so many people working on putting a stove in an apartment. It's just.
Of course, and of course, it's not policy to have five people putting in a stove in an apartment. Of course not. And, and, and you're right, that's a two-person job. And, and uh, you know, we've got uh, we've got evidence of who's doing that. We'll be glad to um address that issue.
Yes.
All right, and um, and, and I'll thank Chris Rollins for the work he did on the outside of the building with the water bugs. So thank you, Chris. All right, uh, do we have anybody else from the public to speak tonight? Ms. Priestley, do we have anybody else?
No, we don't have, but we do have a question.
All right.
Yeah, I'm going to read it. It's from an anonymous. She states, or he states that the HHA.
Wait, how was the question? How was the question submitted? Was it via email or?
It, it was a chat, through the chat.
I don't, I don't think.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, we're not going to reading.
Okay.
We're not going to read anonymous um messages into the record.
So it was through the Zoom Q and A. It is an anonymous question, which I was going to point out. However, I believe it's been asked and answered as part of the executive director's report. It had to do with when the lottery would take place for the uh waitlist. But it's been asked and answered.
All right.
Uh, Chair.
Uh, yeah, yes, I'm sorry. Who, who's asking before?
Daniel, um, there was, there was a question submitted to our HHA email. Um, Director, I forward that email to you. Uh, so was wondering if you can get a chance to read it. Uh, we're having a little bit of technical issues actually getting or reading that email, Lord is and Frank. So if you can take a minute, Director, and look at your email that I forward to you.
That was submitted tonight during our meeting?
It was submitted tonight, yes.
Okay.
Chairman, while the Director looks for the, for the email.
Yes, Commissioner, for yours.
I just want to point out, if there's any way we can get more garbage cans, we need more garbage cans. We, I have been, every other week, we have actually been partnering with the um Food Pantry. We come out here. Food Pantry, we come out here and do the same services that we do at the office, but we do it outside. And in sitting out there, I witnessed how, and Eric and Kim can, can, um, say it as well, how the individuals, they, they leave the stuff there and this past week, I actually asked them, like, why didn't you put it in the garbage? And they said, well, there's not a garbage here. And they were right, there was not a garbage in that area where they're sitting. It was more towards, um, three-twenty-one towards the back and towards the other side. I think we, we definitely do need more garbage cans in the area. I honestly feel very bad for maintenance every morning. Um, I'm pretty sure if you guys look at the cameras, you can see the mess that these individuals leave on a nightly basis to these um, maintenance workers. They just leave everything all over the place. It's not fair to maintenance. And if they're saying we need garbage cans, well, I, I'm not saying let's make it comfortable for them, but just let's make it, because the last thing we wanna do is look like we're a mess all the time. So if we can get more garbage cans in the area, especially Harrison Garden over by the horseshoe, um, those are definitely two areas that we have identified that may need more garbage cans. Um, it would be appreciated. And my next concern that a resident brought up was, um, and myself as well, is the skunk issue behind, um, Harrison Gardens, um, three, three-eleven Harrison in the back. I spoke to Sammy briefly earlier today about it. Um, I was wondering if there was any way that we can cement. I know he stated that we have to make sure the rodents are out of there before we cement it, but there's literally about five, six skunks that are in the back area every night. So even if the, the kids park is there, nobody's going to those little parks because the skunks are taking over. So if there's something we can do to maybe, um, you know, make sure that they're not in there and then cement it, so it doesn't continue to happen, you know, it would be greatly appreciated.
And I think Sammy can comment too, but I think our approach there is to try to find their, their homes and fill them with cement, as you said. Uh, but they are protected species, so we, we have
He explained that to me earlier this morning when I bumped into him, um, and he did explain that to me, he did state that, I know it's a problem across the entire housing authority, but again, it's sad because we have two parks and the kids can't play because there's skunks in there, so I, I don't know, I don't know what we can do to, to fix this issue.
I mean, we do, we do, if you don't mind, I can speak in regards to that, Mr. Reco. Um, yeah, I did speak to Barbara, but Barbara, we have to get the exterminators, try to actually extract the skunks from being underneath. Now, they're really underneath the foundation, so it's kind of complicated for us to actually grab them one by one and get them out. And to cage them, I don't think we do any trapping on, on live animals. We would have to actually try to get them out and move them away. So it's, it's a big process. They just, we'll seal one place, they'll come out another, it's, it's, you know, it's up to our exterminators and how they would handle it. Um, that's not my profession, so I really can't give you much of an answer to it, but I will have the exterminators attack it.
Yeah, might I suggest we have a separate meeting with them? Just on the punk issue.
We'll do so.
I don't think I'll ever get used to the hoops you have to run through with, uh, armaments and critters. Suburban me would handle it himself, but you can't do that in the urban area. All right, uh, anybody else?
We do have, uh, the one email that came in and it's pretty lengthy, so if you wanna hang in there, I'll start to read.
All right, have you previewed and make sure it's appropriate?
Um, I, I think so.
Okay.
Um, uh, below, this is from Jessica Rivera. Um, it's titled tenant issue still not resolved. Below is the same story I wrote about a few weeks back and nothing is still resolved, no payment for my stolen stereo. And I'm still stuck in a temporary apartment after promise won by February of twenty twenty-one. My name is Jessica Rivera, I've been in HHA for thirty-two years, I'm now head of household for my own apartment. I am currently residing in a temporary unit, which is four fifteen Marshall Drive. My permanent unit was destroyed in the kitchen area and during COVID, I had to be temporarily replaced immediately. I'm a single mom of two and was transferred into another unit which had the same problems from my previous unit, mold. I was then transferred to the temporary unit here at four fifteen Marshall Drive and was faced with other issues like bedbugs for months and months, and housing had to come to spray my temp unit uh, for about six to seven months because the building and neighbors were also infested. I begged housing to move me again and nothing. I then got to speak to the Director Mark Reco and I have every conversation email available. We came to the conclusion that instead of moving me back to my unit, which was messed up, to move me to a unit that had three bedrooms. I was residing in a three-bedroom apartment. Because of the ages of my two children, the Director agreed. Mr. Reco then emailed me a contact stating that I had to wait a few months, which would have been February twenty twenty-one for the elevators to be fixed and then I could be placed somewhere and I agreed to that. So many buildings that don't have elevators had vacant apartments that the Director also refused to place me in. Here we are in May of twenty twenty-one and I'm still in my temporary unit wanting to be placed somewhere. My kids and I are living horribly because most of my belongings are still at five forty Marshall Drive. I had to move out of the permanent apartment at five forty Marshall as fast as I can. Because not only was the kitchen wall failing, but it was mold in the kitchen sink flooded my apartment every single day because of plumbing problems also in the building. Also, the Director had contractors come into my home during a pandemic and fix my wall in the kitchen with myself and my two children living there who both had asthma problems housing is, is and was aware of. I finally got placed in the temporary unit and then faced bedbug problems. Most of my important belongings and belongings stood in five forty Marshall Drive. Once I realized how infested this apartment was with bedbugs, I contacted housing explaining that I cannot move all my things over here to get them infested too. They agreed that I can keep most of my belongings in my apartment at five forty Marshall Drive until I was permanently moved into a three-bedroom apartment. After about six to seven months of the bedbug issue was finally resolved, I then contacted housing to see if I can get into my unit at five forty Marshall Drive to retrieve my things that I left there. I had two keys to the apartment. I tried to get to the apartment myself to see if I get in to gather some things and noticed the locks were completely changed without even notifying me. My address is still with the apartment, five forty Marshall Drive, apartment three D. I pay rent to five forty Marshall Drive, apartment three D, not to address, not to the address I'm currently at. The apartment is technically still mine. I was not notified of the locks changing because the Director and Site Manager at the time, Jaren, allowed me to keep my belongings there. Finally, a few months after arguing with our new Site Director, Maria, I was finally let into my original apartment with my belongings at five forty Marshall Drive. I was escorted by a housing worker and my Site Director, Maria. Upon entering the apartment, I noticed things had to be, things to be out of, to be so out of place. Nothing was the way I left my apartment from when I was last inside. I took pictures of the very last time I was in my apartment and compared them to what I was finally let back in and nothing was the same. I went to check my living room closet to see if things were still in there and noticed my stereo system was gone. The box to the system was still left in my apartment, but my stereo was gone. I notified the Director again right away and the housing work in my apartment did so also. The Director asked if I believe it was a worker who took my belongings and I stated that how can it not be when they were the only people with access to my apartment? I had no idea my door lock was changed and was never, ever told it was. The Director then asked me to write a statements about what happened and I did. He asked for pictures and receipts of the stereo and I sent that also. I then reached out to a person named Andrew Pistado for help because I was told that help, he helps with HHA issues. We spoke once and I never heard back from him also. I emailed both Andrew and the Director multiple times. I called them and also text them multiple times and nothing. HHA workers have a history of taking people's belongings out of their unit when they have to enter. My question is, why am I not getting help from something stolen from my own apartment? Why is nobody helping me when I pay rent faithfully every month? I paid money for my stereo and I'm very upset that someone will go into my unit and take it. All my other belongings are there except my stereo. I was told if we have any issue with HHA to send it, send an email through here. My contact info is two zero one eight nine nine one five eight five. Please feel free to reach out to me, thank you sincerely, Jessica Rivera.
You're muted.
And to anybody's knowledge on this, uh, at this meeting, has, has Ms. Rivera put in a filed a police report with that incident?
I believe she has and, and we, we have been working to resolve this issue with her.
I know, Director and, and Chairman Mello, um, I've actually still been in contact with Ms. Rivera, I have spoken to her about the situation. She did go to the Hoboken Police Department to, to file a complaint. One of the things that she was told was because there was so much time that had passed and they didn't know exactly what date it happened, it was very hard to actually follow a, a stolen um, merchandise report. I think it was just like they took her, her, her statement of what had happened, I don't think it's, it's a full report, I don't know, maybe, um, Officer Prance could, could tell us exactly what would happen in a case like that. Um, I think as a resident and, you know, um, Director, I'm gonna be totally honest, I think there were so many flaws on the housing authority's side over this entire situation. Um, she's a single mom, she has two kids, the things that she has gone through are so unfair, I feel. I feel like it wasn't handled properly. Who, there's so many questions, and so who locks to be changed? Why wasn't that, why wasn't, where is the lack of communication happening? Because obviously her locks were changed, she wasn't informed, she was only told, she only know, knew that her locks were changed when she went to the apartment and put her key in and noticed that she couldn't get into the apartment. And all her stuff is in there, I mean, as I think anybody would, would be upset to find out. And then she couldn't get in touch with, with the, from what I, from what was told was for weeks before she was even allowed to go back into the apartment because no one would allow her without the Director's permission. So this, this poor, poor family and, 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 you know, and individual and her kids have gone through a lot and all in the middle of a pandemic. I think, you know, we need to, we need to do better by our residents. Um, we definitely, obviously she has photos, she sent them to me, the stereo was there prior, the stereo wasn't there afterwards. The only thing that happened in between that time was the locks was changed. I'm not saying that an authority person took it, but the authority should be responsible because they were the ones who changed that lock without telling her. And, um, so
Sergeant, Sergeant, do you have a police report or is that?
I'm sorry?
So, obviously minus the specifics at the moment, if I don't know, I, I'm definitely gonna look into, uh, Ms. Rivera's, uh, report. However, just to get a few, uh, um, terminology, uh, things down. When we refer to legal, you have a civil side and you have the criminal side, okay? Unfortunately, if the locks were changed, that's going to be on the civil side. But anyone unlawfully taking someone's property is criminal, that's on the theft side. So it's going to be a joint effort right there. Um, another thing to confirm and clarify here is you can have a police report and not have a complaint. However, if you have a complaint, you would have had to have had a police report filed. So if a report was filed, which I'm gonna probably say a hundred percent that was the case, to narrow down a timeframe to have enough to file a complaint against someone where you would end, end up going to court, that is a whole nother side of the investigation. So, I, I'm not knowing Mrs. Rivera's information at the moment, I will look into that. Uh, but just so everyone knows the difference between a report and a complaint, uh, I'm gonna probably say we a one hundred percent took the report. Problem with that is if there's a big enough timeframe that goes by, uh, we lose physical evidence, whether it's, uh, fingerprints or what have you, if there's any video camera footage. I can't, uh, explain that or speak to it any further unless I know exactly what the timeframe was. Now, if she was temporarily, uh, placed into another location, that timeframe will come into play to find out how long ago she was at five forty Marshall and then I, I believe it was four fifteen Marshall where she's temporary staying. So that timeframe is a big factor in any investigation, so, uh, but I'll look into it and I, I will absolutely let you guys know.
And I think, Mr. Merchant, that you're setting up a, um, uh, an intake with her in the very near future, I think.
We are meeting, we are meeting with her tomorrow. Yeah, too.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Director.
Yes, Councilman.
Um, is the, and, and not to the, um, the extent of the merchandise missing, but the timing in that, in that email, is that pretty accurate as far as, uh, when she was moved, how long she was in temporary versus permanent? Uh, I mean, we're, we're talking multiple months there. Um, i- is that accurate or is that some exaggeration?
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to take a look at, back at the date she gave, but it, it has been a while while we've been preparing this unit under contract. Um, so there, there has been, there was the bidding period and then there was the period after that, uh, that the contract is in place now. So it has taken a while for that particular unit that she wants, um, to, to, to get ready.
And, and that, that I understand, I, I think the, the more pressing issue for me is the timing of uh, of her informing the housing authority of the bedbug issue and how long it took for her to be removed from that situation. Is that accurate, was that?
Well, I think the treatment of the bedbugs was going on. And if you're familiar with bedbugs, we, we can do treatment and then often they can be brought back into the unit.
Sure, of course.
Um, if you're visiting somebody else that has them. So I think our bedbug policy and reaction to bedbugs is very strong. And we, 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 we bounce those babies pretty quickly. Uh, but again, in, in some instances, it's very difficult if for some reason, um, they're either being reintroduced or whatever, I'm not saying that happened, but bedbugs can be um, quite a while before you just put up your hands and say, we need some other alternative for this.
Yeah, sure, and, and that's what I was getting at, what, what is really our response and how fast are we uh, kinda getting on top of that? And, and if that's the case, so be it, right? If, if we've been on top of it since the beginning and it was just a prolonged period because there may have been a reintroduction, that, that's a whole different issue, but I just wanna make sure that our policy is in place and the timing that we have is in place so that we're making sure that this health issue is not, uh, lingering.
Yes, Councilman, and, and I think we're very, very quick on our bedbug response and, and we counsel when we go through it. We take it very seriously.
Great, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, this was definitely an outlier. Um, okay, so that's it for the public portion, correct?
Chairman, I was just sent a message. I received a text, yeah, Agent Rollins, is that the same one, Ms. Ms. Race?
Yes, about another resident that sent.
Yeah, she just sent me a text, so I don't know if it got in on time, she's saying that there was a text from, uh, Mrs. Gomez, so if somebody can check.
An email from Mrs. Gomez, that was.
Who, who was it sent to?
To the HHA email?
Tonight, so.
Daniel, do you see that email?
Yeah, just bear with me one second, I've looked through emails, but I haven't seen anything from Ms. Gomez. Uh, the only email was read by the Director.
All right, we're, we're gonna have to move on now.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna, you know, while we, that was going on, I did look up, uh, Mrs. Rivera did in fact file a police report on June the eleventh at about ten fifty in the morning. Uh, unfortunately, I can't go through any more than that, but she did file it. And, uh, the two, uh, addresses of four fifteen, uh, were listed in the report.
All right, thank you for that update. All right, um, so reports to committees, we did earlier at the start of the executive director report, uh, we've now had the public portion, there's no unfinished business for tonight, so.
There's no more, anymore.
Uh, Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven point zero one. A resolution to approve the minutes for the June tenth, twenty twenty-one monthly board meeting. I will make a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Do you have any questions or comment on the minutes from June tenth? We're gonna vote, please, Director.
Pistado?
Yes.
Hey, Lewitt? Uh, I think Aaron, um, joined us.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's been with us, but he might have dropped off.
Okay, might have dropped off, um, Dee Mello?
Yes.
Put him in the attendee section by accident.
All right, so can we, can we promote him to panelists real quick?
I saw him a little while ago.
Yeah, this is like a start time, he, he gets kicked out and we're just gonna resubmit him back in.
Okay, we can continue with the vote.
Hello, Aaron, you're back. Um, so we had a vote with Aunt Pistado and then, um,
Yes.
So we're voting on the minutes. Yes, okay, he voted affirmatively. Who's next on the?
Dee Mello?
Yes.
Dee Ress?
Yes.
And Russo?
Substate.
Jay Sanford?
Yes.
E Sikes?
Yes.
Very good. All right, uh, Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven point zero two. Very good. All right, uh, Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven point zero two. A resolution authorizing the payment of the monthly list of bills for the Hoboken Housing Authority. I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any questions or concerns about the monthly list of bills?
Yeah, I've got, uh, Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, Commissioner Porger.
First question is, um, ACB Services, the cleaning and disinfecting services for May and June. One is, so this is, uh, the company that was chosen to do the, the monthly disinfecting and cleaning. A, how is it, how has it been going? And I don't remember seeing this last month or the month before that. So are they just coming at, you know, random months or is it, is it every single month?
They're coming every single month. Um, it wasn't on last month's list of bills, but it, it was on the prior. So they, they submitted their May bill too late and so it didn't make the, it didn't make the June list of bills.
And what, and what is, what is the overall, uh, assessment of what they're doing? Do we, do we have someone double checking that they're actually cleaning and disinfecting?
We do, and, and overall they're doing a good job.
Good. Uh, second, next one, the, uh, the Slade Elevator Industries, uh, eighteen thousand. Whi- which, what, what is this one for? I mean, I, I, I know this is, this is going to start getting frustrated if we continue to see fifteen thousand plus on every single month. After all the money we just spent. So just, is this the one that, that broke down?
So, so we did have some issues with Slate Elevator not providing service tickets for their monthly maintenance charges. And so this encompasses part of that. Um, I'm pulling up.
What does that, what does that mean?
So as part of their contract, slate is required to provide monthly preventative maintenance. They go into all twenty elevators. Uh, the ones that are under modernization are not part of that. And as part of the nine elevators that were modernized, uh, we don't pay for the, for the maintenance on that. For I believe it's the first two years. So there were a number of service calls. I'm pulling up the ledger right now.
So when you, when you guys sent out the elevator costs over the last, I think it was five years, what, what percentage of those is that cost being just maintenance and not actually? Cause I, I, that's the first time I'm, I'm hearing of the, there's a maintenance cost every month.
Yeah, so about sixty thousand dollars annually goes just for the preventative maintenance.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's, that's very typical with elevators. I mean, we have four elevators in my building and we, we actually felt like we weren't doing enough maintenance and that was leading to more breakdowns than, than could be avoided. You know, dust collects some of the different mechanisms and it's, it's a problem if you don't maintain them properly. It becomes a very, very big problem.
The, um, the reimbursement for Home Depot purchases for Emma, what, what, can you just detail what that is?
Typically at Home Depot, uh, when we go to make purchases, um, we use what we call a procurement card. The particular employee that I provided the procurement card to had issues. So it is masonry supplies. It was sheet rock. It was vanities. Um, I could provide the full details on that. Um, but I did end up putting that on my personal card. And that's why you're seeing it on the list of bills.
So the, the card that he was given just wasn't working, you're saying?
Yes, that's correct.
The resident, under resident services, the, can, can you give us assessment, uh, you don't have to do it now, but what's the RAD, RAD budget is for the year and, and how much has been spent? Now these, all these items on here for resident services, they're giving, Mark, they're giving a, uh, Director Reco a yearly budget. Is that right?
Yeah, we have a resident services budget and we also put aside them, put aside money for our RAD initiative for the year. Um, so we could break those down for both of you on our resident services budget as well as the RAD budget.
Yeah, cool. That'd be great. And, and just, you know, I, I'm, I've said this before. I know I talked to Daniel about this in the past and we actually did some things, but you know, I'm pretty sure some of these places would, uh, they, they would help out here with some of these costs. Uh, just for, you know, being a good community partner. So it's, it's, you know, sometimes it's worth the ask. We're having one of the commissioners say, hey, do you, do you know anybody that's willing to donate, you know, some pizza or do you? Just to save you some money and then, and then you potentially spend that on other things that the RAD board, uh, RAD board want to spend it on. Uh, for example, like Rosarios, I know like, I, those guys are good, those guys are great guys for community purposes. And so is La Serto Bro- Brothers. Like we could easily, you can't score if you don't shoot and just throw out and ask there and say, hey, does any commissioner have any local restaurant partner that wants to donate dinner for the Father's Day barbecue? You know, I just, just, I've said it a thousand times in the past and we've done it. Uh, Daniel came to me and said, hey, can you do this? Can you get that? We went and we, we used some relationships that we have and we get it done. Um, so just a note there and then that's all, that's all I have. Thanks, thanks for answering this.
I have a question regarding the bills.
And can, if, if I may add, if I have an opportunity to speak, uh, to respond to the Commissioner, uh, after you, Barbara.
You can answer him because I have something on the bills, so you can.
Oh yeah, so Commissioner Pistado, um, I, I definitely go out and, and speak to our partners for support on many of our activities. Um, I'll definitely do more of that this year. I know that, um, Councilman Ruben Ramos, uh, continues to support us, uh, with, you know, transportation for some of the, uh, trips that we are planning for the summer. Uh, some of the smaller, uh, fishing trips with Resident Council President Joe McDonald. And also, uh, Councilwoman Emily Jabor and, uh, the mayor also, uh, are great partners in terms of helping us, you know, in, in terms of getting donations from ShopRite and other partners. So, but to your point, we'll definitely increase, uh, or double on getting more, uh, partners to donate to our events and programs.
Hi, Chairman, I have a question regarding the bills, just one. We were, I know previously we just discussed about the appliances and not being able to get it. But it's hard for me to see that in May, we spent twenty thousand on refrigerators and stoves. I'm just almost twenty thousand. So when were these refrigerator stoves ordered and where did they go? Because obviously they're not going to the apartments that, that are being fixed. So, I mean, if we spent twenty thousand, do we have any idea where they went?
Emma, can you add some color to that?
Yeah, so these were, these were appliance orders that were placed several months before. They were going to vacant units. They're not part of the units, the, that the contractor is turning around. But there are units that, that, for example, our force account labor crew is turning. There are also, uh, appliances that the management offices keep. They've been going quick, but it is a large amount of money. But it is because there were orders that were in arrears. Some orders placed in February, some orders placed in January. And that's the reason why you're seeing such a large number.
I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner. I, I, I just a follow-up question. Emma, what's the typical cost on the, uh, on those appliances and, uh, and are we locked into any specific brand?
Typical cost on those appliances, I apologize for the, the background noise. It's between four and five hundred dollars. Uh, we go out to bid on this contract on an annual basis. We don't have a minimum take, but we do bid it out. Uh, the contract runs about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so my next question, Emma, is this. So you're saying that these refrigerators, appliances that were bought, were bought to keep in stock for the managers, for the residents that need them, right? But if we have a need in apartments that are being fixed for emergency reasons, then why wouldn't we be able to use these and then have them replaced? Because I, to me, it's confusing and I, I know it can't possibly just be me that's not understanding this. We have nineteen thousand dollars worth of refrigerators and stoves and you're saying we can't get refrigerators and stoves. And I just had a, a resident talk about how for a year, her, her sister couldn't get a stove.
Great question.
Emma, you want to take it or you want me to, uh, or I know Frank. So you, you're, you're playing, you're, you've got to balance here. You're ordering appliances back in January, right? And you usually expect to get them in three to four weeks. Now, here we are, months later and our supplier, who we prebid, um, is, is having a hard time supplying us. Um, again, we've talked to other folks that are having the same issues and, and we hope we can find some other suppliers. But you've got a number of units out of our thirteen hundred units. We, we have a lot of units. And so we are replacing, when we go into a unit and we find that the stove is bad, we replace it. So, so there are units that are out there. We have trained individuals that go in and test the stove. And if the stove is bad, we replace it. W- we don't replace stoves just because somebody won't, doesn't like their old stove anymore. We, we go and we test it. We make sure it's safe. Um, and, and we go down that road. Two, we do have a turnover crew that's working that as they turn units, we put those appliances in. Three is that when we come to a time that the contractor that we have for the forty-two units should, and we talked about this the other day with him, should we reach that time where he says the only thing left is I can't get a fridge? Then we are going to take a look at our entire stock, what we have anywhere and say, what can we transfer over there to turn that unit? So what we're, the position we're at now is a, a unit that's not ready, that we're saying this appliance may take a couple of months and may delay this unit. We, we told them, okay, when we're at that, that point where we think we've got the cabinets now, we've got everything ready, the unit's ready to turn. At that point, we'll be communicating and if we can use any of that stock that's out at our different sites in order to turn that unit, we will. But right now, we're not at that point yet. Um, so I hope that answers your question. We know where every stove goes. We have a record of every stove. We know what is delivered and what goes into a unit. Uh, we have serial numbers and we track those very contritiously.
Director, if I, and, and Commissioner, if I could just jump in real quick, uh, I, I think, I, I think it might just be a, a miscommunication here because residents are hearing that, well, we're backed up on, on appliances and cabinets. But we have appliances, right? So I think using the, um, and rightfully so, using the excuse of this, um, this delay in receiving new appliances, um, that becomes problematic because then people are kind of hanging their hat on that. Well, we're just waiting for the appliances. But then people find out we have appliances and then it becomes a whole different kind of conversation. So I think to communicate better with the residents to say, look, this is, this is what's going on. We do have appliances if needed, but there's still outstanding issues with those units. And if we get to a point where those outstanding issues are, are finished, we'll figure out the appliance situation. So it's not just that because I, I, I know I get it as a councilman and now I'll get it as a commissioner again. People come to me all the time and say, but they said, right, the, the infamous they said. Uh, and, and that's kind of where that miscommunication always happens. So sometimes I think it's just a matter of getting that point across in a certain way so that our residents understand. Well, it's not just the appliances. That's just one of the few issues that we have and we're trying to solve that. So I, I, I think that makes more sense in making sure that they understand that. So just my two cents on it.
All right, any other questions regarding, um, monthly list of bills? I forget if I vote them, please.
AM Pistado.
Yes.
Hey Lewitt.
Yes.
D Mellow.
Yes.
B Reyes.
Yes.
M Russo.
Yes.
Jay Sanford.
Abstain.
E Seitzman.
Yes.
All right, Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven point zero three. A resolution to adopt and approve the single audit for fiscal year ten one, two thousand eighteen to nine thirty, two thousand nineteen of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken, conducted by Pocari and Company CPA. I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
If we could have a, or, uh, any questions or concern, well, we're going to have the presentation, right?
I mean, I just will note that this is, if you'll notice, this is the twenty nineteen audit. Because of the pandemic, everything was delayed in the auditing process. And this isn't even the twenty twenty audit at this point. This goes back, um, to, uh, uh, the twenty nineteen year. So kind of old. Um, but, uh, but it's something that we need to do at this point. Where the board says they did receive the audit and, uh, the audit was done correctly.
Okay.
And we have invited our auditor to be on the line with us today.
Right.
Ms Maris, if there's any questions, we can, we can address them to him. We did review this at the Finance Committee as well.
Okay, so anybody have any questions? If you're going to vote them, please.
AM Pistado.
Yes.
Hey Lewitt.
Yes.
D Mellow.
Yes.
B Reyes.
Yes.
M Russo.
Yes.
Jay Sanford.
Abstain.
E Seitzman.
Yes.
Resolution to, uh, Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven point zero four. A resolution to approve the AMP budgets for the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second? I'm sorry. All right, any questions or concerns?
We did invite our fee accountants here. This budget is our preliminary budget for next year. Um, you will be approved, we, we are requesting an approval tonight. It then goes, um, for review and comes back to you in September for a final approval. Um, and we did, uh, review this at the Finance Committee and we've invited our illustrious fee accountant, Mr. Ketchum, to be here. I think it's a, it's a budget that overall, um, although it shows a small surplus, it's about a seventy thousand, if I'm not mistaken, Bill, uh, for the public housing program, which in that size budget is fairly small, but in many ways a break even. But that's positive for us. Um, and then it also has the, uh, addresses the Fox Hill budget as well. Uh, but both of these are preliminary and coming back in September. Bill, do you want to add to that?
I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone. Hope everybody's well. The, the AMP budget excluding Fox Hill, which is now a RAD, uh, property. Um, your excess of revenue over expenses expected for amps one through four in the COCC is fifty-three thousand dollars. Not a lot, but surplus across the board. The Housing Choice voucher program has an anticipated surplus of eleven thousand seven seventy. And the converted to RAD Fox Hill complex, F the debt service, after the new mandated funding of the reserve for repair and replacement, has a projected surplus of three hundred and ten thousand five eighty. Overall, the authority's anticipated surplus for law programs is three eighty-one ninety-nine. Um, I'm comfortable with the level of funding. HUD is expected to fund you this year on a calendar year at ninety-five percent of your entitlement, which is up two percent from. which is up two percent from last year. In addition, the other revenue numbers, and Mark mentioned earlier about the vacancies being reduced, hopefully by August or September dramatically, by the end of the year down to five percent. We've anticipated across the board ten percent vacancy projection just for conservative purchasing. If you attain a better level, then it goes to your bottom line. HUD doesn't take it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Will, the effort here by Bill and Emma is immense every year on doing our projections, taking off what we had last year. And as you know, we've been very, very, very conscientious on the budget, fortunately and unfortunately, for the past five years, because we have been in a critical state on the budget. So we need to break even or add money back to reserves when we can, while keeping a good level of support for our residents.
Any further question or comment? If we could have a vote, please.
AMP Stato.
Yes.
Hey, Louis.
Yes.
D Mello.
Yes.
B Reyes.
Yes.
M Russo.
Yes.
J Sanford.
Abstain.
E Seitzman.
Yes.
All right, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven point zero five. Resolution to authorize the approval of the annual and capital budget for the fiscal year October first two thousand twenty-one through September thirtieth two thousand twenty-two. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any question or comment? If you have a vote, please.
AMP Stato.
Yes.
Hey, Louis.
Yes.
D Mello.
Yes.
B Reyes.
Yes.
M Russo.
Yes.
J Sanford.
Yes.
E Seitzman.
Yes.
Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven point zero six. Resolution to authorize the executive director to sell authority property through public auction, sealed bid, or through an interlocal sale to another government unit. I will make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any comments or questions?
Please explain.
This is an eighteen-year-old pickup truck that was originally used for snow plowing, went over to be the trash truck, and is falling apart at the seams. And really has used, has passed its useful life. So that is what we're requesting that we dispose of.
Any other comments or questions? If you can have a vote, please.
AMP Stato.
Yes.
Hey, Louis.
Yes.
D Mello.
Yes.
B Reyes.
Yes.
M Russo.
Yes.
J Sanford.
Yes.
E Seitzman.
Yes.
All right, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven point zero eight. Resolution to award a contract for the purchase of copiers and multifunction devices. I will make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
I have a comment. Wasn't there, wasn't the? Yeah, thanks, Jerry. Wasn't there a copier that they were giving away last, last month? I'm on an email chain. I was just looking at it. For the nonprofit group. Someone can fill in the blanks here that I'm having, but there was an email that went out.
The LE Center, Andrew.
Yes, yes. Where did it go? Where did the copier go?
I thought, I'm not sure, but it might have went to the computer person.
Because I saw that, I think Daniel's on, Daniel, are you on that email?
I'm not even, I believe, one of our program providers requested that copier to be donated to, to their organization. I'm not sure if they received it.
Okay, so I just, I saw this resolution, and I immediately thought like, hey, they're giving away a copier. We should grab it. You know, we're not the, we don't have the most money, so that would have been, that would have been a nice little get. I guess someone, I guess we didn't feel a priority or a need for it as bad as another organization. If it's free, it's for me, so I would have jumped on it. That's me, I guess.
I think with copiers, though, the ink is actually the bulk of the cost. So if you get, if you get an outdated copier, you're going to hit through the nose in ink. Then I see Mr. Ketchum, the accountant, nodding his head that I'm correct.
Would you work at Office Depot?
No, no, I just, I've just copies on my own dime as a public school teacher, and I know a thing or two about the cost of ink.
There you go, okay.
All right. All right, so could we have a vote, please? Or are there any other comments or questions? All right, if we could have a vote, please.
AMP Stato.
Yeah, yes.
Hey, Louis.
Yes.
D Mello.
Yes.
B Reyes.
Yes.
M Russo.
Yes.
J Sanford.
Yes.
E Seitzman.
Yes.
If I could very quickly, Mr. Chair, I believe we inadvertently skipped resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero seven point zero seven.
Did we? And by we, you would mean me.
I used we, which I will also point out was changed on the revised resolution, the caption. The correct caption is resolution to reject all bids for the maintenance.
Yeah, yeah, no, I did, I skipped that. That was just an oversight. I told you, I'm using my wife's computer, so I'm totally off here. All right, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven point zero seven. Reject all bids for the maintenance and servicing of boilers and associated mechanical equipment. I will make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, any comments or questions?
What is this for? This, we just replaced, we now have a working boiler and a backup at every single one. Is that correct? Every single building?
No, we don't have a working boiler and a backup at every site. And we still have boilers and ancillary equipment that need maintenance and preventative maintenance and yearly maintenance. And you've got to bring them down every year. We've still got issues that go on with our boiler system. So this is for our professional boiler servicing company to come, come and service us for the year on any boiler issues that we may have.
Got it.
And unfortunately, we had to reject the bids, and we're going to be rebidding.
All right. Any other comments or questions? If we could have a vote, please.
AMP Stato.
Yes.
Hey, Louis.
Yes.
D Mello.
Yes.
B Reyes.
Yes.
M Russo.
Yes.
J Sanford.
Yes.
E Seitzman.
Yes.
All right, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven point zero nine. A resolution to increase the amount of the contract for gate upgrades at Foxhole Gardens and Adams Gardens. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any comments or questions? If we could have a vote, please.
AMP Stato.
Yes, sorry.
Hey, Louis.
Yes.
D Mello.
Yes.
B Reyes.
Yes.
M Russo.
Yes.
J Sanford.
Yes.
E Seitzman.
Yes.
All right, and resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven point one zero. A resolution to award a contract for recreational facility operations to Zog Sports New Jersey LLC. I will make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, what's the, what's the cost of this? Well, the revenue, I should say.
Yeah, what's the, what's the revenue on this again?
Orders you know that at your fingertips.
Daniel?
I think it's one sixty-two, the rate per hour for the rental of the I'm a Johnson.
With those limited hours?
Yes.
Yeah, and we, and we, and Councilman, thank you for asking a question about this. So they had a, we parted it down to what, fifty percent of what they had originally wanted, because we wanted to leave some windows open for our residents. We didn't want, we didn't want Zog to dominate the time.
Awesome. I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you. All right, any other comments or questions?
AM, ready? AMP Stato.
Abstain.
Hey, Louis.
Yes.
D Mello.
Yes.
B Reyes.
Yes.
M Russo.
Yes.
J Sanford.
Yes.
E Seitzman.
Yes.
Okay, do we have any new business?
Yeah, I have a quick question, Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
I know, I, thank you. I know we had a couple of months ago talked about the director's contract and the process in doing that. I just want to make sure that, are we going into this new year, will we be now conducting the annual review of the director as a, as a as a, as a board? And has that new process been in place, put in place, that we talked about when we were going through that process back in, I think it was April? So I just want to, I just want to make sure that, you know, there was a lot of questions around that, and that the board should be voting in a resolution that we, as a board, have conducted the annual review and not just three members of the procurement committee, as it says on his, on his review, as well as it says in his contract. So I just want to make sure, you know, we're not letting that slip through the cracks, and that I believe you're on the same page at that meeting. You talked about that you do think this is a good policy to have, where we're all putting our two cents in. And it really, in the end, it has nothing to do about the job that the director's doing. It has more to do with that, more eyes on this, and more input, both pros and cons, that everyone on this board can give the director as to his performance for the year is, is going to make everybody, is going to make his, his job stronger, his performance stronger, and it's going to give a lot of different strengths from each of us and experiences from each of us shed some light onto his performance in those aspects. So I just want to make sure we're
If we could, yeah, if you could sum, I mean, that was, that was some time ago, and it was, there was a
Yep.
smattering of comments. I don't know if we have actually boiled it down to an organized determination as to any sort of change. So if you could do me a favor and please, you know, summarize suggested changes in the form of an email and send it to myself. I will make sure that the committee takes it under consideration.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
No problem. All right, if there's no other new business, yes.
Chairman.
Commissioner, Commissioner Reyes, ladies first, and then we'll go to Councilmembers.
I just, what did, I actually, during the meeting, received the screenshot of the resident who did send the email to the, to the for the public portion. It was sent at seven oh one. I shared it. I just want to know if we can read it on the record, or?
I'm fine with you reading it into the record. Counsel, there's no problem with that, is there?
I mean, I'm not sure if there's any question as to the legal appropriateness of the comment. If there is, and you want to forward it to me, Ms. Reyes, I'd be happy to take a quick look at it and give you my opinion.
It was a screenshot that was texted to me. Do you want me to?
Is it, have you, have you quickly sort of previewed it, and it's appropriate? And it's not anonymous, is it?
I sent it to the director as well as Mr. Merchant. Maybe they would know better. I mean, I'm not an expert in legal, you know, the legal aspect of it.
It's not anonymous, is it? I just don't want to get into.
No, no, it's not. It's from Ms. Gomez. It was said that seven oh one PM. Actually, the person, it's under Karina Gomez, but I guess that's.
Okay, Director, do you want to read this into the record?
If I could find it, I'll be glad to. Did you email it to me?
No, I texted to you, Director, because it was a screenshot sent to me. So I just forwarded it to you, Danny and Frank.
Mr. Chairman, while they're looking for that email, I just wanted to make a brief comment. And just to say, say to everybody, it's a, it's a pleasure to be back on this board. I'm looking forward to really getting into the weeds on everything. My main focus is really to serve the residents as best I possibly can. I know everyone else who serves on this board feels the same way. And Director, I know you've been doing this for a long time, and you want to see the same goals achieved. I would really hope that we could streamline anything that is outstanding and just keep moving forward and really just be the best we absolutely can be for our residents. So I appreciate everyone and happy to be here.
And it's good, good to have you aboard, and, you know, no disrespect to Commissioner Impostado, but back when he was originally picked, I was shocked that you weren't put on the board back then, the second I was off the council, so. But hey, we got you on now, so.
It was a better, always a better selection.
Andrew, we all have, we all have visions of grandeur, don't we?
Welcome, welcome, man, welcome.
See, I queued that up first.
Matthew, I sent it to Fitzpatrick and Waterman, that email?
I've got it.
You got it?
Yeah, seven oh one PM.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and Director, just one comment beyond maybe a reference to a unit. If there's any personally identifiable information, phone number, things like that, you may want to omit that.
Okay. I think we're good, and here is the, here is the text. Sergeant Falco replied to my email regarding the noise issue in my building. And when I met and spoke to him, he said he emailed housing and no one's responded. So an authoritative figure has corresponded to my complaints, and no one cares to respond to this issue. Why?
Okay.
Do we know if anyone in housing, do, do we know, do you guys, Frank, Director, do you remember or recall?
We do, and I think Frank's been working on this issue.
I don't, I don't have an email from Sergeant Falco, but I can certainly look at that, or if someone can forward me that email, I'd be glad to look at it.
But you have been in touch with Ms. Gomez, correct?
Ms. Gomez is an, yes, this is an ongoing issue with noise complaints. We've met with Ms. Gomez, personally with Maria in our office. We've met with the person that is the noise complaintant, or who they're complaining about. And Ms. Gomez was successful the first time around in getting to court and getting Mr., getting the other person to, to get a fine of a thousand dollars. So we understand that the process works. Unfortunately, I understand that it is frustrating to have to do it every time. As we spoke with the police officers and Sergeant Collins, unfortunately, that is the process. We just need to keep calling, keep calling if the police come a certain amount of times. There's a court date, and then because she already did it one time, and she already did get a one thousand dollar fine, it would be much heftier the next time, and it could rise to the, to the level of losing her public housing. So, you know, to continue, as tedious as it is, to continue to follow the process with the police and making the reports, and then, then we can send the notices. But, but I understand the frustration, and it's ongoing, and it's every weekend. And she calls Maria directly on her personal phone to let her hear the music. And there are, there are some cases where it's, you know, and it's understandable, but frustration is there. Unfortunately, the process, the steps have to be followed for us to be able to do something, for the police to be able to do something. And she did succeed one time. So I think that it is a process that is tedious but works when followed through. And she is on our transfer list, so that is the biggest frustration. As soon as her apartment will be ready, she will be moved, and hopefully this will be resolved. But in the meantime, we will continue to work with her, and she should continue to call the police whenever there are noise, noise issues in that moment.
All right. So there's no call for closed session tonight, right? There's no call for closed session tonight, right? I'm not missing anything, Mr. Fitzpatrick? Okay, so.
As far as I'm aware, Mr. Chair.
All right, I'll make the uh, you know, welcome back, uh, Councilman Russo, and I will make the motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Night, stay safe.
Oh, yes, and everyone, get your vehicles off the road if you're in this. Although I did, I did get.
Well, get your boats on the road, one or the other.
I did, I did get my daughter back dry from camp by cutting through housing property because we stay dry. All right.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Have a good night. Bye-bye.
Yeah, so. Yeah.
What is Sammy's last name? Does anyone know? Just so I could just. He just said Sammy and I didn't have his last name.
I think it's for Mint, for Mint.
Um, okay. Okay, is it the last meaning? I I know what it is.
Yeah.
All right. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.